Good evening and welcome to a special digital edition of News 18. Tonight, a special debate involving the candidates for West Lafayette City Council.
This debate is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Greater Lafayette and also WLFI TV 18. The candidates have agreed to a set of rules governing this debate.
Each candidate will give an opening statement to be followed by questions from the moderators. Candidates have one and a half minutes to respond to each question. The debate will end with closing remarks.
And our timers will make sure that we adhere to those agreed times, too. And the candidates have not seen these questions in advance and have agreed not to bring prepared notes for those questions.
Now, the four candidates here tonight, James Blanco, David Sanders, Iris O'Donnell Bellisario, and Gerald Thomas. And Gerald Thomas will start tonight with his opening statement. Mr. Thomas?
Good evening, everyone. I'm so pleased to be here this evening and so pleased to be able to open this event with my statement. I told myself 16 years ago when I became interested in running for city council that I would do what was best for the city and for the citizens of West Lafayette. I remember the first time I went out and passed around my campaign flyers. A gentleman was riding his motorcycle, drove up in the driveway. I handed him my flyer and he said, "All campaign candidates are crooks." And it took me back because I said, "Wow, I'm not a crook, but he sees me as that way." And it really hurt me to some degree because I didn't know where he was coming from. Obviously, he'd been hurt in the past. Someone had done him some wrong, and he saw that and felt that most candidates don't want to do the right things. But I told myself a long time ago, "I'm going to do it again, what's best for the city and for the citizens of West Lafayette." Secondly, you see me in a wheelchair. I have two incurable diseases that took away my legs, my ability to walk. But this disease does not define me. My mind is still sharp. I still feel I have something to give to the citizens of West Lafayette as far as management and ordinance and governance of our city. And I will hope to continue to do that in this next term. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to hoping to see some of you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. Now, Mr. Sanders.
My name is David Sanders, and I am currently city councillor at large in West Lafayette. I want to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters and WLFI for hosting this forum. I recently hosted a candidate forum in another race. I know the challenges that are involved, but I really think it's extremely important for people to be able to get the opportunity to meet their candidates so that they can make an informed decision about whom they should vote for. So, I'm an associate professor of biological sciences at Purdue University. I have lived in West Lafayette for 27 years. My three boys all attended the West Lafayette Public Schools. I believe in government that is accountable, responsible, and accessible. And I've tried to embody that in my own term as West Lafayette City Councillor. I have monthly meet-your-councillor meetings, so I meet with constituents. I answer every single email I receive from constituents. And people know that they can contact me and get their concerns addressed. I've worked extensively with Mayor of West Lafayette and with the heads of all the departments to try to get citizens' questions addressed and also to formulate resolutions and ordinances that people want to have West Lafayette do. I've worked very extensively on issues of traffic, on the Traffic Commission, preparing the city for climate change, working on issues about housing, work with all the staff, and I try to make sure that people feel comfortable coming to city council meetings and coming to commission meetings and having their issues addressed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Sanders. Now, to Mr. Blanco for opening statement.
Good evening. I'm James Blanco. I've served you on the West Lafayette City Council since early 2020. A lot of my early time on the city council ended up, by necessity, defined by the COVID pandemic and our community's response to that emergency, the massive pandemic. But a constant thread that has become even greater pretty much every day has been our struggle for affordable, accessible housing. And I can tell you, as someone who was a renter, that I personally even going through that. I had to deal with the rental market myself, and I can tell you, it's not easy. And I can tell you that every day on the city council, I'm going to fight for you to make sure that there's enough places for people to live, whether you're a student, whether you're a young professional, or you're wanting to settle down and put roots down into our great neighborhoods in West Lafayette. Thank you.
Okay. And for our final opening statement of this evening, Iris O'Donnell Bellisario.
Thank you. I'm so happy to be here this evening. My name's Iris O'Donnell Bellisario, and I have lived in West Lafayette for about 10 years. I am a Purdue graduate and recently bought my first house here. I am so excited to be a part of this community and have the opportunity to serve you. I stand for protecting the environment, affordable and accessible housing, and want to bring transparent communication. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you for all those opening statements. Now, we're going to head into our first question here. What risks do you see in West Lafayette's growth that can be identified, planned for, and even mitigated? We're going to go ahead and start off with Mr. Thomas.
There are risks, obviously, in economic development and growth in our city. We've seen a lot of growth over the past five to 10 years in the city we call West Lafayette. And we have developers that are standing, knocking at the door, wanting to come into this city and conduct development. So, we have to look at each development on its own risk and benefits and make sure that it's the right fit for the city of West Lafayette. We need to work with developers and make them understand that we have rules and we have things that we wish to accomplish through your development, and that they need to agree to those risks and benefits, and hopefully, we can all come to some agreement and move forward. I believe there is development that needs to happen in our city in the next four years. There are some good opportunities for us that are knocking on our door, and I'm looking forward to working with the mayor and the new administration on making sure that those new opportunities are the right fit for West Lafayette.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Sanders.
I think that economic growth has to be balanced with sustainability. Number of issues, housing needs to be developed in a sustainable manner. It has to be using sustainable materials. I'm happy to be able to mention that I've been responsible for ensuring that electrical vehicle charging stations are included in large developments in West Lafayette. I think we need to be thinking about the effects on our water resources and also on our emergency response systems. As we extend the city, as we increase the industrial base, we really have to be thinking about how are we going to fund the extension of services to many of those new areas. Another thing that I have really sort of focused on is making sure that this new growth doesn't require government subsidies in order to take place. I believe that industries, when they come to this city, should be contributors and participants in the city rather than asking for handouts from the city. And I'm going to continue to work on that if I'm elected to another term. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders, thank you. And now, on to Mr. Blanco.
Hello. So, I think it's important to... We are a community that has so many opportunities. We have a strong workforce, college graduates from Purdue, one of the top universities in the world. But that comes with some challenges. And we want to... Some of the things we need to do is we want to be careful when somebody wants to set up shop. We want to make sure that when they set up shop here, that they do have our best interests at heart at the end of the day. Yes, they're going to need to make money, but yes. But at the end of the day, we want to make sure that companies that set up shop here still will do their due diligence to help make sure that there's the infrastructure for their workers so that we don't have, say, an increasing housing shortage. We want to make sure that there's enough places for the people working there so that they can also call West Lafayette home. And we just want to make sure that we can continue to have the awesome quality of life for our citizens in West Lafayette.
Thank you. Now, Ms. O'Donnell Bellisario.
So, with a growing community comes growing needs and demands of our infrastructure. And so, I think it's a balancing game of making sure that we can still provide for the community members that are moving in and making sure that we're still providing the same quality of life. So, looking at sustainable economic growth, looking at protecting homeowner rights, and also making sure that rentals have rights. And then, looking at expanding our stormwater infrastructure, making sure that our utility infrastructure is prepared for the growing changes with bringing industry and new community members into West Lafayette. There are also efforts we can take to help plan for some of these things and take into consideration what a growing community might look like and make small incremental changes instead of having to encounter those all at once when a new industry enters into our community.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's time now for rebuttal. We open the discussion to all of the candidates. You can get up to 30 seconds to add additional thoughts on that particular topic if you choose to. Unless somebody has something to say, we'll move on to question number two.
I will just... This isn't a rebuttal. I don't disagree with anything that my fellow candidates have said, but I just wanted to add that we need to be thinking, whenever we're talking about growth, about complete cycles. It's not only the initial development, but we need to think about the whole life cycle. What are we going to be doing during the maintenance phase of development? And also, what happens at the end of the development? What happens... Are the materials that housing or the factories are made of, will they be easily reusable and recyclable? And we should demand more of that from the development that occurs in our city.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any other candidates with thoughts on that? We'll move on then to question number two. Are you satisfied with the affordability of student and resident housing in West Lafayette? And if not, what can the city do to address housing affordability? And we start this round of questioning with Mr. Sanders.
Thank you. So, I'm certainly not satisfied with that. There's been a tremendous rise in the price of housing, of the rentals for students. It's great for people who are in the housing currently, but it's very difficult for people who are trying to come to the city of West Lafayette to find affordable housing. I think that the problem in terms of student housing is largely due to the very large increase in the student population at Purdue University. And there has not been enough of a discussion between Purdue and the city of West Lafayette about the increase in that size. I think that it's something that should be discussed on an ongoing basis. The city should know how to plan for the future. And one of the inputs in that future is the size of the student body, and we are not given that information. So, I, and I know at least one of my fellow city councillors, has been interested in addressing that issue, and I think that's very important. But the final piece is that whenever we do developments, we need to seriously be considering having set aside for low-income housing included in any of these developmental projects. We really need to be thinking about making our community open and accessible to everyone as much as possible.
Okay. Mr. Sanders, thank you. Time now for Mr. Blanco, same question.
I would say I'm not satisfied with affordability in West Lafayette. I remember in late 2021, because of personal issues, I had to change where I was living in the middle of the semester for Purdue. And all of a sudden, very few places had anywhere for me to move into. So, it's not just affordability, but simply the number of places there are to live is simply not enough for the number of people we have. And given that Purdue keeps on escalating their admissions, it's getting worse. But we, as a council, we're trying to address that. We're working with the administration. We're working on, for example, the Chauncey Hill Plan, which would add a plaza and some green space, but also hundreds of beds. So, that's a step in the right direction. We also had worked with... We also had passed the VERVE development. These things, they're not enough by themselves. Purdue is going to have to work on their own behalf, too. But we're doing what we can, and I will continue to work on that. I can tell you, as a renter, that's a problem that I've had to encounter.
Okay. Mr. Blanco, thank you very much. Now, Ms. O'Donnell Bellisario.
I would agree with what they both shared. I am not happy with the affordability or the accessibility of housing in West Lafayette for students, first-time homeowners, or small families moving into the community. It's a huge barrier to be able to settle down here. And we have a really low vacancy rate, and the price of housing is just skyrocketing, which is great for sellers, horrible for buyers. As a recent first-time homeowner, it was incredibly difficult to be able to settle in the community and set down roots. And West Lafayette is a place that I wanted to be, and so, I spent two years fighting for that opportunity. And I think there are options that we can look at to support first-time homeowners, try and create educational programming for sellers around being open to receiving FHA mortgages. And then, also, you know, working with Purdue University to look at creative solutions for university housing and rentals and what options we can do to make sure that both our long-term residents and our students who are moving in and out of the community have an equitable chance at housing.
Okay. Thank you very much. And now, final... That question goes finally to Mr. Thomas.
I also agree that housing is a major issue for West Lafayette, probably the biggest issue that I see that we need to address. I've had graduate students come to me and say, "I can't live in West Lafayette. I had to find an apartment in Lafayette." And that's just difficult to understand and hear. And we do have low- and medium-income housing families and individuals that aren't finding housing here in West Lafayette. So, again, it's a difficult issue. We need to work with the developers and see how they can assist us in this incident ever. We also need to... I know Purdue, again, is not in the business of building dorms. They're in the business of educating students. And so, when their student population increases year in year over, creates a major issue for West Lafayette and puts a burden on us to try and figure out how to house these students that are coming in. So, we need to work with Purdue. We need to work with our developers to see what kind of solutions we can come to in addressing this major issue for our city.
Thank you. And it's time to open it up now for rebuttal. So, do any of the candidates wish to add additional comments to this question?
If I may. First, not a rebuttal. I've worked with all three of these candidates on various issues over the course of time. So, I don't think I'm going to be trying to rebut anything they say since we were largely in agreement. I just would want to add that Mayor Dennis turned toward me to trying to address one pressure on the housing market, which is about transient rentals. And we, together with the city attorney, crafted legislation to address that as far as we could. So, I think that there are things that we can do. You know, it's not just something that we can say, "We can't solve this problem."
Any other candidates? We're going to go ahead and move on then to question number three here. Levy development calls for increased retail space. Right now, there are vacant shops in the Wabash Landing Development and across the street and the large apartment complex. In many cases, the retail that is present is hardly attractive. What is your opinion of further retail development where demand seems low? And our question here goes to Mr. Blanco.
So, I mean, I would be in favor. I mean, obviously, we have... There are places, but I mean, I think one of the reasons there have been issues with the levee is, I mean, there's also... It's about to be, probably about to be significantly redeveloped. So, it's kind of hard to justify often wanting that. But, yeah, certainly, we want to work on making sure that there's more places for people to open up shop. Absolutely.
Moving on to Ms. O'Donnell Bellisario.
I think that could be a potential opportunity for addressing some of the issues that we may face in West Lafayette. So, one of those specifically is looking at food insecurity. So, although that's not a huge prevalent issue, there's not a lot of access to grocery stores near campus. And so, potentially, using that as an opportunity to bring fresh and healthy food options to the students could be a great way to kind of fill in that gap in that space. I also think there's a lot of opportunity to encourage small business owners and help support them as they come into that space. I think there's been a lot of turnover since I've lived here, so figuring out, you know, why is that happening and what can we do to support those retail organizations that do come into that space.
Mr. Thomas?
I believe that we have opportunities in the... Especially the Village Area to try and understand what's needed, what our markets are looking for down there. And we need to work together with developers to see how we can make something viable out of certain areas that seem to be depleted at the moment. You have retailers that are closing shop and moving some to West Lafayette in some way because they just could not afford, number one, the rents, and, number two, they just didn't see that development as being viable in the future. And so, we have an opportunity, again, to work with developers and create some positive situations in areas where we can have retail and housing together that works for everyone. So, it's a challenge, again, but I believe we can make it work.
And Mr. Sanders?
So, the city administration with city council input has developed a plan for the whole area. This has been a multi-year process of trying to figure out how we can develop the levy. And it's an issue that you can't just do it one store at a time. You really have to make an overall plan for the levy. And I believe that the administration, city administration, actually has been working very hard on trying to solve all the problems simultaneously so that we have a revivified levy. And so, that's... I think it's essential to the city. It's actually a great site, being close to the river. I think that, you know, redeveloping the river needs to be a central part. It's a tremendous asset for the city. Many cities around the country have recognized how important being... Having proximity to the river is for their quality of life. And I believe that the levy development provides us with that opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. It's time... Well, we won't call it rebuttal. We'll call it further exploration. Do any of the candidates have anything more to say on this topic? Then, we will move on to question number four. What should the city council do to help reduce gun violence? And the question goes first to Ms. O'Donnell Bellisario.
So, I think there's a lot of different opportunities here, and I think the first thing is I turn to the community and ask them what they want to see happen. You know, I'm not here to represent my own opinion, but the community's opinion. And I would love to hear what their ideas are on this. I think there's opportunities, like what we're doing at the West Lafayette Intermediate School, having a police officer there, engaging with the youth to teach them, you know, what is a police officer? What, you know, how do you handle a firearm safely? Things like that. And I'm really proud of our local police department and the different educational programs they have, and so, would really lean on them to help in making that decision.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving now to Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas, gun violence?
Gun violence is an issue in the Greater Lafayette area, and it's concerning for our citizens and for those that live here. We're seeing folks, probably not from the Greater Lafayette area, come in and create some of this gun violence that we've been seeing. I'm very proud of our West Lafayette Police Department. They are top-notch department. They go out and make sure that they visit with the schools and with communities. When I say companies, to show them that we are here, we hear what you're saying, and we have a plan to try and make sure gun violence does not become prevalent in West Lafayette. It's a terrible issue, and people are dying because guns are not regulated. And we have people that are creating issues for our community that cause harm and death to a lot of people. So, it's an issue that's dear and dear to my heart. I have a cousin that was killed because of a robbery that went bad. So, I do have a personal issue in this, and I know that our West Lafayette Police Department will work diligently with all entities involved to address this issue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Sanders?
Just three points today. The first is that because of state preemption of local laws, our ability to address this issue is comparatively limited. It is something that I have opposed often, the state preemption. And we continue to see it even in this latest session, that the state is making it more and more difficult for local communities, local municipalities, to regulate their own lives. So, that's... We have to admit that first. Second is, this is an issue that I have been concerned about for quite some time. And... But the most recent city council meeting, I thought it was important always to bring a detention to this, especially to the mass killings that have happened in this country just in this last year from gun violence. So, I read out the names of all the people who have been killed by guns in these mass shootings in this last... Just in 2023. And unfortunately, that list has grown longer, and I'm reaching out to my failed city councillors in other cities to try to do the same approach. The final thing is, we had a shooting involving children in Lafayette, and as soon as I heard that, I contacted the mayor... Not the mayor, the chief of police, Troy Harris here, and said, you know, "What can we do?" And then, there's this project, I think it's called Project Gun Safe. You know, are we a participant? And we had a very nice exchange of emails, and as a matter of fact, they... The day after that, I mentioned it to him, he brought it to the public attention to try to keep people safe from gun violence.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. And finally, to you, Mr. Blanco.
All right. So, I did want to echo what David had said, but, yeah, the state has done a lot to intervene in our ability to try to work on our own problems, which has been a constant annoyance. But I think there are a few things we can think about. One is, I think going out in the community, like I've been doing for my campaign, we've reached over 600 voters, we've knocked over 400 doors. Like, we're trying to hear people out, really. I think that's a big approach that the city council... That's a big part of what the city council should be doing. But also, I think supporting our first responders, our police, our fire department, I think that's another important, critical tool, especially Troy Harris, like supporting them and their efforts. But also, I wanted to shout out actually our colleague, who's not a part of this debate, but Kathy Parker, for her work in putting on seminars for showing people how to safely store their guns and all that. I think that's a great effort on her part. And I think all of these are necessary and so much more. But unfortunately, our ability to do more is pretty limited by the state.
Thank you. Now, we do want to go ahead and open this up if any... Now, we do want to go ahead and open this up if any other candidates would like to make a comment about this question. If not, we'll go ahead and move on to question number five here. So many students don't feel safe walking around near campus by themselves, especially after dark. So do you have any ideas for improving near-campus safety? We're going to start with Mr. Thomas.
I have heard from students that do feel compromised walking around campus at night, and that's got to be a lonely feeling for them. We certainly have to work with Purdue University in making sure that our students feel safe around campus areas. And whatever that means, we need to put a system together so they feel like they can go to an area at night and feel confident that they're not going to be accosted or, or even shot at walking around campus. I, I would like to see a system where, you know, we have phones on campus. I know where students who feel threatened can make a call and hopefully get some assistance. I think we need to improve upon the system where if a student really feels intimidated, they can call a number and have someone or a couple of people walk that individual back to where they belong so that they again feel safe on campus at night. It's, it's, it's an issue, and I feel for our students at times, and I hope that we can make a, a major improvement in, in campus safeties and on Purdue University campus.
Thank you. And now we're going to move on to Mr. Sanders.
Thank you. So in my capacity as chair of the Student Affairs Committee at the Purdue University Senate, we often address these sorts of issues. And most recently, the Purdue Student Government is using some of their resources, their monetary resources, to have students who feel unsafe be accompanied as they go around campus itself. Now, the question, I wasn't 100% clear whether it's just on campus or near campus as they, as they go around. And I think that we have issues off-campus, but near-campus as well. And, you know, it's, it's, I think that we need to extend that service of accompanying students to the near-campus areas as well. That's something that we really should be thinking about. Another thing is that I'm working with the chief of the Purdue Police on issues of safety for transportation modes. And I think that that's another thing that can be day or night, but we have to be concerned about safety of pedestrians from encounters with, you know, people who are not using modes of transportation appropriately. And I think that that's something that the city has addressed in the past and needs to continue to address.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Blanco.
So I think I would definitely side with a lot of what David had said, but definitely accompanying people, that is a great way to help make sure people feel safe and are a little more safe when it's a little darker. Definitely working with Purdue is certainly an important part of all of this, and it will always be because Purdue is such a massive portion of our community. And certainly, working with the police department, whether Chief Harris of our, of the West Lafayette Police or the Purdue Police, and in general, just as I've said earlier, the hearing people out at the end of the day for some of the ideas that they have that might be very useful for us on the council.
Thank you. And now, Ms. O'Donnell Bellisario.
So as a single woman who did go to Purdue and would work on campus, I felt that. I have been there where I was on campus late and I needed to walk home, and it was terrifying. And I really felt like Purdue had, they did have a walking partner program that I did use several times, and I would love to see that expanded because you are only walking with typically one male, and that still can be sometimes intimidating. And so I think there's some opportunities to grow that program and make sure that anyone who needs help or who even just wants company can make sure that they feel safe in that situation. I would also add that it's really important to listen to any of those concerns and make sure that we are, create a safe space where individuals can come and bring up those safety concerns and share those ideas freely so that we can understand what the community would like to see happen. And then making sure that there's an active partnership between the Purdue Police Department, the West Lafayette Police Department, and from, I did meet with the police chief in West Lafayette, and he did share that they are in regular communication. And so I think that's something that's already being developed and expanded, and I think that's a great foundation to, for a program like this.
All right, thank you. Any additional thoughts? You can take up to 30 seconds on student safety near campus. And we'll move to question number six then. The Indiana Economic Development Corporation is proposing to build a pipeline from Tippecanoe County to Boone County to supply a new industrial park there with vast amounts of water from the same aquifer that supplies the city of West Lafayette. What is your position on this project? Mr. Sanders?
As I mentioned before, I think that water resources are incredibly important issue, and I am not in favor of diversion of water from the aquifer. Aquifers do not recharge very rapidly. This is a problem nationally that we have depletion of aquifers, and they really are affecting the future of access to water in this country. I was once, some time ago, asked about what's the one issue that people aren't addressing fully, and I, from a scientific perspective, and I said, it's water. You know, water is the most critical resource issue that we have, and we really should not be diverting water from the local aquifer for industrial purposes. And I, but I also think that we need to be thinking about our own development and the demands on water resources here as well. And we need to have commitments from developers that they're going to minimize the amount of water, they're going to contribute to the infrastructure that's necessary for conveying and conserving water.
Mr. Blanco?
I would say I oppose such a plan because we're a massively growing community, and our needs, our needs for water or whatnot are ever-growing. And it seems, strikes me as a very odd idea, a very mistaken idea to be, to be diverting large quantities of water outside of the county that there was, we're going to be needing even more of. So that just strikes me as not a, a very wise use of our, of our precious water resource. So I would say this is not a good idea.
And finally, on the, the proposed water project to Ms. O'Donnell Bellisario.
So I would echo what both of them shared. I am not in favor of it. I think the first thing we should be doing in consideration with this is understanding what is that life, the lifespan of this water supply? What are our growing needs going to be? With a growing community comes growing needs of water. And do we have the capacity to meet those needs first before we consider supporting an external community? I think water is probably the most critical resource that we have here, and we should look at ways that we can protect that for future generations. And as our climate changes, how is our water source going to change? Is that going to impact us long-term? And do we need to look at alternative solutions for our water source in the future?
And finally, the same question, and Mr. Thomas?
I agree with everything that everyone has said up here. I've always thought that water was our next oil, and as, as we're seeing that around the country, water's become a very valuable commodity. So why would we send our, our water to a different county when we're going to have needs here with, with increased population, with increased development? Just not a great idea to do that, and I'm sure that the administration feels the same way as there are councillors up here that have spoken. So we, we need to continue to hang onto the water we have here to take care of the needs of our community, of our citizens, and our, our companies.
Thank you. And now, we do want to open up this discussion to all of the candidates again, so would anybody like to make any additional comments?
If I might, at this, we need to focus on sustainable growth. We need to focus on that here in West Lafayette, we need to focus on that in the state of Indiana. And diverting large amounts of water is not consistent with sustainable growth. And so we're all, we're all in agreement here on this particular issue.
Anybody else? If not, we're going to go ahead and move on to question number seven here. So how will the new public safety building on Navajo Drive impact the safety of West Lafayette residents? What benefits do you see coming from this significant investment? And we're going to start this question with Mr. Blanco.
All right, I, I would definitely be excited about this new safety building. It's, it's a great opportunity because some of our buildings, some of our facilities are getting a little out of date, and so having an updated, new safety building is just an excellent, it's a big step forward for our community. I know that our, so a couple of our fire stations are, are getting a little out of date, they're having more and more, we're have, we're going to be paying a decent amount, but I think that the new facility is just, it's just going to be a big step forward for us.
Thank you. And now, we're going to move on to Ms. O'Donnell Bellisario.
So I've met with both the West Lafayette Fire Department Chief and Police Department Chief, and they both seem very excited about this. And I'd like to highlight some of the things that they've shared that this will probably bring to the community. So specifically for those employees, it will allow a safer environment for firefighters to have an individual space to leave their contaminated gear and hopefully minimize the health risks to them. And I think as the individuals protecting our community, we should be protecting them in return, and this is a great opportunity to do that. In addition, there's potential opportunities to maximize the training. Having a shared space between both departments would allow those individuals to work together, be in more regular communication, and really have an opportunity to connect and also maximize like the workout space and different educational programs for community members. So I think it's a really great opportunity to not only support our fire department and police department, but also support our community members in bringing a space where they can come in and be able to connect with all of our community leaders.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
I think it's a fantastic idea. Looking forward to participating in this and hearing more about it. We do need to have a safe space for our fire, firemen and firewomen and our police, policemen and women, where they can go and feel, have a spot where they can decontaminate and become, you know, a part of what needs to happen within that specific facility. I'm just, I just think it's a, it's a great opportunity to show that we care about our men and women who protect us every day and keep us safe. So I'm all for it and looking forward to seeing it to fruition.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Sanders?
So I want to agree with my fellow candidates about the importance of this for, in particular, our firefighters. A number of the points have already been made, but there's also just the issue of ventilation in the old facility versus the new facility, and that's, how that affects the health and welfare, well-being of the firefighters. So I think it's going to be tremendous, in tremendous improvement. We also have the problem with the old fire station that the modern equipment can't even fit comfortably into the door of the old fire station number two. And so that's, that's something that there, it's a challenge all the time. I think there's also going to be much better access for the firefighters in this new facility. I think that's going to be a core design principle for this facility. I think that having the two departments together is going to increase the amount of cooperation. I don't know, when people think about fire departments, they're not just fighting fires. If you look at the monthly reports, as I do, most of what they're doing is not in fact fighting fires, it's dealing with health emergencies. And I think that we're, now that we're moving in the police department to having a mental health specialist who is willing to work with people, and then, as I said, the fire department is working on other health issues, having that coordination is central facility, I think is going to be a great benefit to the residents of West Lafayette.
All right, thank you.
Opening up that for any other agreement or any other comment? All right, we're going to move then on to question number eight. The question goes to Ms. O'Donnell Bellisario first. How should the council and the city administration advocate for West Lafayette citizens to address the impact on increasing student enrollment at Purdue?
So I think this goes back to the topic that we were talking about, housing. So working together with the university to come up with creative housing solutions and transportation solutions. So making sure that we have opportunities for students who can't get housing on campus to be able to make it over to Lafayette during all times of the day, partnering with city bus, and also taking into consideration what are those growing safety needs? So that public safety campus will be a great opportunity for us to be able to be prepared for a larger population. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now to Mr. Thomas, same question.
As Purdue continues to grow, we will have these issues that we will continue to have to deal with and address. Students, student rentals are migrating into neighborhoods, and they're posing some problems in some neighborhoods that I've heard from some of my neighbors that have talked about this. So we need to understand how we address this. Airbnbs are also criming into our neighborhoods. That's another issue that we need to understand and how to deal with. It's, again, one of those issues that because of the university and their growth, that we're going to have to struggle with for the, the number of years to come. And I hope that we can work with our, our partners to do the right thing in making sure that our neighborhoods are continuing to be safe and welcoming, and that we can find reasonable accommodations for our students going to Purdue University.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Sanders?
I want to just refer briefly to something that Iris mentioned about transportation options. I think we can be very proud of the city bus system that we have here, but it really needs to be extended more. The, it, just because of the nature of the size of the buses and the areas that are being served, they don't really come frequently enough for people to be able to readily access transportation as they, as they need to. And I think working with Purdue, making it clear to them that the stresses that the increased population of students are placing on the, on the city are making, that they need to make an additional investment in city bus so that it is more accessible, comes more frequently, serves more places. Again, it's a, it's a great system, but I think we need to rethink about its, the way it's structured in order to serve this larger population. In addition, we need to just figure out what is the future plan of Purdue for these students? I mean, we have, we have two things. We have an increase in the number of students that we're currently taking, and yet we have a large decrease in the number of Indiana high school students who are going to college. So we really need to have the full plan presented to us as a city so we can understand what's the, and what's necessary for future development.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blanco?
There are a couple of issues at hand. This is, this issue, which is really one of the key, the keystone issues we are facing as a city. This is why I sponsored Resolution 62023, which called on Purdue and West Lafayette to come to an understanding on housing, especially in the midst of growing Purdue admissions, which I'm proud to say passed the city council unanimously back in February. So I think it's, it's important to also say that, like, there's, there's a need for housing. We have, we have these plans in, in the book, in the books. We have the Chauncey Hill Mall Plan, which will add hundreds of beds. We have a plan to rezone to allow some homeowners to attach dwelling units so they would be able to rent out a small apartment, like, it's what's called a granny flat, the old days would be called, that we, it would be a simple way to add more housing. But also, city bus. At the end of the day, I'm, I'm one of our representatives on the city bus board, and I'm very proud of our direction under our new CEO, who is making it a big priority of his to, to expand. of his to, to expand service, like to get it to the point where we're talking about, we're not talking about a bus every half hour, hour, which is very difficult if you don't have a car. I mean, that's very difficult to go for. Instead, we're talking about buses every 15 minutes or even 10.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open up this question to the other candidates as well. If you would like to add any additional comments, go ahead. And if not, we're going to move on to question number nine, which is going to be our final question for tonight. Each year, West Lafayette welcomes thousands of new residents. What will you do to encourage students to become more active citizens of West Lafayette rather than just temporary guests? This question right here goes to Mr. Thomas.
I think it's important that we welcome these new students to campus and make sure that they understand they are welcome, that we, we want them here, but they also have to understand that they have a responsibility. Another one being good residents, if they're especially living in a neighborhood, to our current citizens, they have to understand that they have a responsibility to do what's right and to make sure that they, again, are good neighbors to all the other neighbors in the area. I, I have to believe that students want to participate in our community. I believe that they do want to do that, and so we need to partner with them and make sure they understand when they're first on campus. And we have the welcoming of students on campus over at the parking garage over off Northwestern, where we greet students and talk to them about what's important as they need to be good neighbors. And I, I believe that our students are here to get an education and not to create problems for the city of West Lafayette. They want to hopefully blend in and, and be good partners with the city. So we continue to be just, need to continue to just work with them and understand what their, what their priorities are, but what their responsibilities are as far as students of West Lafayette, students of Purdue and West Lafayette.
Thank you. And now Mr. Sanders?
Besides my teaching at Purdue University, every year I meet with numerous student groups and encourage civic engagement. I'm very proud to say that I actually recruited Shannon Kang to run for city council back in 2019, where she, she's successful, and she was a wonderful city council. I also encouraged Iris to run for city council back in, in 2019, but the, the particular, the districts didn't, didn't work out at that time. I'm always interested in the future leaders of our society. I'm very proud to be able to say that during the course of my political career, I've encouraged many people to join the political process, and a number of them are now in various positions in government, and they, they got their start, you know, working with, with me in my campaigns. But I'm going to continue to do that, to try to encourage them to participate in, in the various commissions that we have, to potentially participate in city council. Also, I had the great privilege of working with the youth councillor to the West Lafayette City Councillor, and I'm looking forward, I'm going to be working on trying to recruit a new one in the, in the near future. So encouraging civic engagement for the next generation is really a very important part of my participation in, in city government.
Thank you. And now Mr. Blanco?
I'm actually an example of someone who, I went to Purdue, that's how I came to the, how I came to the community. And then I ended up afterward getting connected, getting involved, and I just really found that this is just an awesome place to live. It really is. You can walk where you want to, a lot of, there's some, you can walk, you can really walk all of West Lafayette, pretty much all of West Lafayette if you want to. I've done it many times. The, I went to Purdue for political science, and then I ended up sticking around. So did one of my good friends, who's the, our current township trustee, Angel Valentin, and we're both proud people who were won over by this community. I think one of the big parts is making sure, making students aware of just how much there really is here. I mean, I think sometimes at some level, you could say, oh, you go to a big, big city like DC or whatnot, but at the end of the day, you can have a real impact here in West Lafayette, a real sizable impact that you can see very quickly by just getting involved. And that's something we have to offer as a community that a lot of bigger areas don't. Like we, we're a really good community. We are.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. O'Donnell Bellisario?
So I'd like to start with how I got involved. So I moved here in high school, and I was really excited and passionate about the environment and showed up and knocked on Mayor Dennis's door and, and in the old city hall and said, hey, can I talk to you about something I care about? And that started a three-year process of being engaged, working with our city council, working with our mayor, and understanding that our city, our city leaders here are here to listen to our community. They're excited and, and passionate about working with engaged high schoolers, college students, and young, young individuals who want to get involved. And so I've taken that from there and now mentor high school students myself, and have worked really closely with a group of high school students on a statewide initiative to bring climate change legislation to the state house. And being able to share that passion and take what started out as a group in West Lafayette and grew into a whole statewide initiative, I think is something we can also do here with Purdue students, teaching them that there is an opportunity to get engaged with local, local leadership, what that can look like. And there are several student organizations on campus that I think are already regularly engaged. I serve on the Go Greener Commission, and we typically work with at least two or three engineering classes, and the Purdue Student Sustainability Council, and so being able to work with those students while they're here and show them what, how amazing West Lafayette is and how they can get involved while they're here is a really unique opportunity, and I hope to be able to continue in mentoring our kind of transient students.
Okay, thank you very much. Any final student engagement before we move to wrap things up?
Again, if I may, I think another thing we should be thinking about, it's not only the students, but we're also a incredible community, an international community. And it's a great privilege that we have the naturalization ceremony that occurs annually here, West Lafayette. I really enjoy attending it, and I, it's incredibly important to bring those people into the, our community and make sure that they understand that now that they're citizens, they can be full participants in West Lafayette as well.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you very much. Hearing and none, it's now time to move to closing statements.
We're going to start with Mr. Thomas.
I think you've seen this evening that there are some quality candidates here running for city councilman at large. These folks care about the city and wish to look forward to making the city a, a great place to live. I've been vice president of the city council for probably the last two or three years, and that's a big responsibility, and I work with Peter Bunder on council issues. But I've looked at our, our community and how we've grown over the last 10 years and what's happened here. US 31, 231 corridor to take some of the pressure of traffic off the Purdue campus. We look to State Street and making that a more welcoming area that Purdue is used to find major development to come in and, and place their, their roots here. Look at the Wellness Center and that beautiful facility that you can go and exercise in and, and just do some amazing things out there. It's just an amazing facility. Our parks and recreation system with the parks that we have here that are beautiful to, to sit in and have a picnic in, just go and, and enjoy the beauty of those and the trail systems that you can walk on and have just a beautiful time outside, just enjoying the quality of life here. I enjoy the quality of life in West Lafayette, and I've lived here for 37 years. I wish to continue to make this city an amazing city, and if you'll give me the chance, I will look forward to doing some amazing things in the next four years.
Thank you. And we're going to move down the line then to Mr. Sanders for your closing statement.
So it should come as no surprise to anyone that I speak a fair amount. College professor, I can speak for 50 minutes without any interruption, but I also listen, and I also believe in amplifying the voices of the people of West Lafayette. They, I feel very confident that they can always turn to me and make sure that their issues are addressed. They just, just had, someone just wrote to me about scooters in, in West Lafayette once again, and they trust the fact that I'm going to ma, to address this problem. I may not be able to solve it, but I will make sure that their voices are heard, that their concerns are addressed. A lot of the things that we do as city councillors, you don't see it in city council. We, we do things behind the scenes and, but people feel confident, they believe in their West Lafayette city government because there are people who are willing to make sure that their voices are heard. And I want to appeal to everyone for their vote, May the 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to Mr. Blanco for your closing statement.
Well, good evening, and thank you for, thank you for putting this on WLFI and, and also the League of Women Voters. So I'm James Blanco. I am, so as somebody who's a renter and I've been, I've lived in West Lafayette for nine years, I, I'm proud to call this place home, and I'm proud to keep on, to run, to keep on fighting the good fights, help make sure that there's enough places for people to live, whether they're students, whether they're, whether they're renters, like whether they're looking to put down roots. And you'll have, and I'm proud to be asking for your support to keep that going.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to the closing statement for Ms. O'Donnell Bellisario.
So as a young woman, I really want to bring more representation of women, young families, and young voices to the city council. I think bringing new perspectives and representation of new individuals to our community as our community continues to grow will help us grow in a sustainable manner and make sure that all perspectives are represented. I am really excited to have the opportunity to be here tonight and would love to speak to anyone who's interested. And, you know, getting out, although there's only one position, this is a very crucial, I think, opportunity to make a difference. So I encourage everyone to get out and vote on May 2nd, and thank you so much for having me.
All right, thank you. We do want to thank all of the candidates for their participation this evening. Now to find out more about these candidates, and in fact, all of the candidates on your May ballot, we encourage you to use the League of Women Voters online voter guide at www.vot411.org. Early voting starts tomorrow, Tuesday, April 18th, at the Tippecanoe County Office Building in downtown Lafayette, and the general election will be held on May 2nd, 2023. Thanks for joining us tonight.
And for a complete recap, be sure to watch News 18 at 10 on the CW or later tonight on News 18 at 11. Thanks for joining us and have a great night.